So, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our committee of the whole meeting for the 28th of May, 2025. I will just wait till everybody gets online here. Hey, is there any declaration of peculiar interest? Seeing none, adoption of the open session agenda be resolved that the committee to hold is hereby approved of the open session. Agenda dated May 28, 2025 is presented. Could I have a mover and a seconder, please? Counselor Eastman, Counselor Lawrence, all in favor, please. Thank you. So today we have a presentation delegation, Mount Pleasant Cemetery, we have Alan Fransky, Jackie Olmstead, and Wayne Robbins. I'm not sure who's speaking or whatever. Come on up to the microphone, please. And is it turned on up there, do you know? Okay, there you go. So the floor is all yours, but you have to leave it here when you go home.
Well, thank you very much. I'd like to, Your Honor, and counsel for meeting with us. My name's Al Fransky, and I'm part of Mount Pleasant Cemetery Volunteer Board. I'm the chairman. I have with me Wayne Robbins and Jackie Olmstead. Jackie is our secretary treasurer, Wayne's a director. And we're here today to advise you of our situation and to ask you for some assistance in helping us cope with the challenges that we've found ourselves in. So I'm not sure if everyone's familiar with our cemetery or not, but it's located at 79 Hastings Street South, which is down past the old hospital and going towards the the water treatment plant. And we're a non-denominational cemetery, and it's one of the few in the area that are that way. And consequently, with that, we are on our own to provide our own funding, and the board is all volunteers, so we don't receive any payment for any of our work. And our only source of income is the sale of plots, and that's where we find ourselves in the situation we're in. We'd like to propose to you people, hopefully, a working relationship that will benefit both of us in the future. And like I said, if many of, many of the people here probably have people in our cemetery, a lot of the town founding fathers are located in our cemetery. Mr. Klick is one of those, and we've been in operation since the late 1800s, early 1900s. So it's we've been there for quite a while, and so far, we've been able to, along with the board, been able to run our facility without any assistance from outside. But we find ourselves in a problem with the last couple of years and being able to sustain our grass cutting and maintenance of around the stones and everything. We recently just put out a tender, and we had no response to the tender, so requests. So we find ourselves, the last couple of years, we spent a considerable amount of money in doing the grass cutting, and it's probably in a neighborhood of $14,000 a year to cut the cemetery, and we just do not have the revenue income to offset that. So consequently, what we've been forced to do is to cut into our GICs and our savings, and in the last two years, we've not taken the income in to offset that. So what we'd like to propose to the council today is a partnership in that that we would use your people to, or however you wanted to do that, whether we would be able to supply some type of funding and to see if you guys could do our grass cutting for us. We're we don't really have the facilities to purchase our own equipment, or we don't have the manpower to run it ourselves. So that's where we were thinking that you, your staff already, you have an existing crew that that's basically what they do is, is to go around and cut, cut the grasses and stuff for their town. So the option is that if we continue to operate the way we are, then it'll just, it's just a matter of time before we run out of funds and eventually, I'm not sure if you're familiar with, with what the regulations are with cemeteries or not, but ultimately, the whole thing would be reverting back to you guys. So like, we're trying to stay in this, and we're not asking for assistance other than the grass cutting. Like, we would look after maintaining, doing all the staking and headstones and selling of the plots and everything, and that would be be separate, and we wouldn't expect you guys to have anything to do that. But we would like to work a partnership out with you if we could, that you would cut the grass and do the trimming, and we could pay you a fee for that. So I'm not sure how receptive you would be to looking at that.
Well, first of all, thank you for coming, and thanks for your approach. It's a wonderful approach to suggest a cooperative venture, because as you've aptly pointed out, we could end up doing it anyway. So so we're not oblivious to that fact whatsoever. I think we have to leave this with stop right now to see how they could fit this in, you know. We have a pretty robust grass cutting regiment as it stands, et cetera, but I'm sure we'll try to figure out a way to work, and I'm gonna let oh, was it Pat? Where is it? Were you wanting to speak, Chief Hoover? I see your name, but I don't see anything.
I have internet issues right now currently, your worship. So no, I just, it would take a little time to go through to look at it and see what falls involved in with our current grass program and other cemeteries, et cetera. So
Okay, yeah, so we just need a little bit of time to try to work out the logistics. But we'll most certainly put forth our best foot on this one, because as you say, we're gonna end up with it anyway. Counselor Eastman, did you have a?
Yes, could you just advise counsel of the number of hours it is taking you on an average now?
Roughly in the last several years, it's pretty well, it takes two people, an eight-hour day to do the work there. It's five-acre site, and there's approximately 1,500 to 2,000 stones that has to be manually cut around. So
Right.
So it's, it's, it's a considerable job, but it's also something that we'd be willing to to put forth some sort of compensation, depending on where you guys felt comfortable with it, for sure.
Right, okay, just a mortgage on your house or something.
No, thank you. It's the partnership that we're really trying for. Mayor Jenkins is, we don't expect you to do it for nothing. We can't expect that. And the board will function as it normally is a cemetery board. But we need help. We cannot continue the way we're going. And so Al's laid it out very well. It's the financial support. Working on a partnership with you would be very good. We would like to work with your staff to develop that agreement. That's what we need your endorsement for.
Yeah, so for sure. So thanks for coming. We'll put forth a motion to direct staff to look into this, to come up with some sort of a plan to work with you, and see where we go. Unfortunately, right now, the grass is growing rather quickly. Yeah, and it's gonna take us a little bit, a little time to sort this out, but we'll get at it as quickly as we can. So again, thank you for coming. Thank you for your approach. We really appreciate it.
No, thank you for taking the time. We appreciate that. Thank you.
So maybe I could have a motion to receive the delegation and to ask staff to work out a plan on that. So Counselor, you move that, please, and Counselor Eastman, all in favor, please. So pass. Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, so item six, minutes of previous session be resolved that the council, the corporate, sorry, be resolved that committee of the hold is hereby approved of the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting held on February 25, 2025 is presented. Could I have a mover and a seconder? Counselor Lawrence and Counselor Miles, is there any comments on or questions on that? Seeing that, all in favor, please. So pass, thank you. We have no unfinished business. Item eight, business. We have three items. We're just gonna change the order of this, so Jake can get back out to, out to the field, and so we'll put the motion on the floor. Be it resolved that the committee to hold is hereby recommend that the council, the corporation, the town have bank approve. Option number three, to complete the work at the Flint Street parking lot. Could I have a mover and a seconder? Please put this on the floor. Counselor Eastman and Counselor Miles. The floor is yours, Jake.
Thank you, Mayor Jenkins, African Council. Just a little background, we all know that it's been a plan to pave the Flint Street parking lot. This work included line marking, associated stormwater management work, which includes a single catch basin and 14 meters of storm pipe. The 2025 budget allocation for this project was $60,000. We had a detailed estimate obtained. The cost ended up was $94,324.50 to complete this work. During the process of obtaining this estimate, the parking lot was topographically surveyed, and it was determined that the grading to ensure positive drainage with only one catch basin would be very challenging, as we only have 0.3 of a percent fall to achieve with the one catch basin, but it can be done. Since the estimated cost is $44,000, higher than the budget provided, council is provided with several options. The first option is just to abandon the plan to pave the parking lot, place quarry dam as we have, and grade. This year, if we installed only the stormwater infrastructure this season and provide funding in the next year's budget to complete the remaining work, if we were gonna go this way, it would be ideal to add a second catch basin with the money that we have this year. Or we have option three, which is the option that I've recommended. We have a parquet planned to be placed at the south end of the parking lot. This was part of the downtown streetscaping. This included a concrete pad with accessible picnic tables, benches, and garbage receptacle, and the remaining budget I have for this work is $37,855. If council chooses to, this park act could be eliminated, and the area could be paved with the parking lot when we paved the parking lot. This area then could be utilized for designated motorcycle parking in the summer and snow storage in the winter. This would add approximately 10 motorcycle parking spots. It'd be six by nine, and this would be additional paving costs of only $3,500. The accessible picnic tables that we've already purchased for this parquet can be relocated down to the new accessible playground at the park. Currently, they're not in the plan for down there, but it'd be a good spot to relocate them there. And then we would take the benches. There's a attachment sketch that I've included in my report.
We're trying to bring it up here. It's not there.
There you go. So as we have the sketch there, so the benches that were scheduled for that parquet, we would move up. We would, they're showing on the edge of the sidewalk there, but it's been discussed, and moving them back under the trees provides some shade. Were those blue, the baby blue? We would move them back under the trees so they'd be in a shaded area rather than just baking on the side of the road. And then, it'll be next week or the week after, we'll be doing the shrub gardens, the big boxes that we have that are there gravelled, they're gonna be planted. We worked with our Horticultural Society and coming up with a plan and the best plants to put there, so we're just waiting for them to arrive. And then, as you can see where the yellow is on this, is where the motorcycle parking would be. We would lose one parking spot in the parking lot to provide an entrance into the motorcycle area. But by removing, you know, 10 motorcycles from the parking area downtown in their own parking opens up more room for cars even in the downtown sector. A motorcycle takes up a parking spot like a car, so if they have their own area, it'll alleviate some of the parking downtown as well. The remaining $34,000 of that budget that could then be reallocated to cover the cost of the parking lot and stormwater infrastructure. This would allow for the parking lot to be completed this year and provide much-needed area for snow storage. By adding these 10 motorcycle parking spots, it would also free up more vehicle parking spots downtown, and I believe this unique parking area would also attract motorcycle tourism, which the downtown businesses would all benefit from. So that would be option three, and then option four would be provide the additional funding required to complete the work and move ahead as scheduled. So there's financial implications. I've covered a breakdown here with what I have left in the streetscaping budget for the parquet with the estimate, and I believe that it's basically a wash between the two, and then the parking lot would be completed. So so yes, that's my report. Do you have any questions or suggestions or?
Thank you. I just wanna, I wanna thank you for creativity on this. And I really don't view it as eliminating the parquet. You're just really modifying it. There's still a seating area.
Yep. The total cost would be, my estimate, including the paving, would be $97,824. We're still above the $60,000, but the money that was allocated for the parquet would be rolled into that parking lot. It's still completing the whole area. So we do have the funds under the streetscaping budget to reallocate and do this configuration. Instead of doing a concrete pad with picnic tables, we would do this, because paving's so much more cheap than cost.
So yeah, so we're just reallocating the money. We're taking it away from the little, no, not increasing, we're just reallocating. So
It's the way, it's the way to make it work without having to find more money.
Counselor McGibbin. Mike Rip.
I think it's great. We do have a lot of motorcycles that visit our area. We have a lot of locals that motorcycle as well. My next question, back to, oh, it's gone, sketch. Is there, when they pull in, they have room to back up?
Yeah, yes, yeah. That, the parking lot across there is like 25 feet across the parquet, or it says 35 feet?
Okay, so they're using, okay.
Yeah, they're out there where the yellow is, so they would come in between four and five, the parking, they would go in there, and then there's lots of room that we would have it. They would come in, back out, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Counselor Miles.
I'm fully in favor of this. I think it's very smart. I think that more people are concerned about parking than they are about anything else. I think we have to pave the lot. We've been talking about it forever. We've got to get it done. I'm happy to hear we still have some seating and some garbage along there, and that was one of my questions was, I'm happy to hear all the red arrows, stuff that is staying, it's not being described as being removed. It's going to stay. And I think the motorcycle part is brilliant. That, number five, is there a regulation as to what that has to be? In my head, what I appear happening is, nobody's gonna pay attention. Just park there anyways. It looks like a parking spot?
When we do, when we do the highlighting, it'll be hashed out with the paint, with a sign saying no parking. And then we'll just have to enforce it if it's, if it's somebody parks there, but it'll be well designated.
Can it be narrower? Is there?
Yes, well, we can, we can go a little narrower than the standard parking spot there as well.
And how many handicap spots do we have in here? Just the one there coming in?
There's the one, this is just a layout that we're starting with, but we may be able to fit another one in there as well.
I think if we took two handicap, this is, I'm not.
I know exactly, change number two into a handicap, and then.
One and two, then squeeze three and four down, and then at least we have two, and it narrows that visual of people.
Yep, that's excellent idea, for sure.
Well, I think it's fantastic and way to go, and it's smart. It's all sort of money for the same corner anyways, and I think parking's more important than the parquet.
Perfect. Great, great. So all in favor? So pass. Thank you, Jake. That was great. Thank you. So we will now go back to item A, non-eligible source recycling program, and we'll put the first resolution on the floor. Be it resolved that the committee of the whole accepts the report for information and discussion purposes. Maybe, should I say receives in that first part? Because isn't the following one, do the recommendations? Yeah, so receives. So the first resolution, be resolved that the community of the whole receives a report for information discussion purposes. Could I have a mover and a seconder? Counselor McGibbin and Counselor Lawrence. Christine? The floor is, or Andrea?
We're gonna tag team. We worked on this together. Christine put the foundation of it all together, and then we worked together to kind of add some of the details. So as you know, as of July 1st, our IC and I, our non-eligibles will no longer have the benefit of town-provided recycling services, because the town will be out of the recycling business on July 1st, when the province takes over that responsibility from us. We have been advising businesses since this time last year that they need to find their own solution to recycling, while we have tried to find a solution as well. So at the direction of council, we have worked to come up with the attached proposal to provide an option for those businesses or non-eligible source producers who have not been able to secure their own arrangements. So at least we can ensure that everyone has an option. So in essence, what we're proposing is a user pay model, where you will register to participate in the program, which is a base fee of $50 a month or $600 per year. That will get you a registration card and prove that you've basically bought into the program. That card will be mandatory. You will have to have it with you each time you come to the waste site with your recycling to dispose of it. No card, no recycle. We have to make sure that we're only accepting non-eligible source recycling that have paid for the option to be able to do that, to keep that fair. So once you pay your registration fee, you'll get your card. The card will identify the name of your business, the street address of your business, the dates that the card is valid for, and will be required for entry to the site. It will be up to the businesses or non-eligible source producers to bring that recycling to the waste site on their own. We will not be offering any kind of pickup or transportation services. So they will need to do that, and we will be limiting that to Tuesdays and Thursdays. We need to be able to close off the recycling portion of the, or Monday, Thursday, I'm sorry. See, that's why Christine's here. Mondays and Thursdays, pardon me. We need to be able to manage the access to the recycling area to ensure that residential recycling is not getting brought to the site, and that primarily happens Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So we will actually be blocking off access to that area of the waste site on the weekends. So we will accept commercial recycling on Mondays and Thursdays during regular operating hours. Once you're there, you will pay based on how much you bring. So if you're a small mom and pop shop and you opt in, you'll pay your $600 to get into the program. Everybody pays that. And then you'll pay based on how much you bring to the site, because the more you bring, the more it costs us to get rid of it. So if you have one little blue box, that will be a $15 charge. If you have one big blue tote, that will be a $50 charge, and so on and so forth, based on volumes. There is small savings, I don't want to say they're savings, the amounts between each of these types of containers and boxes that are included in your report are equivalent to each other. So five, or I'm sorry, four small blue boxes is the same as a large recycle tote. Four large recycle totes is the same as a pickup truck by volume. So they increase incrementally. So there is no benefit to, well, I'll just bring 20 small blue boxes, then you're still gonna pay based on the volume of material that you bring. We will continue to separate that into our compactors. We will actually add a fourth stream to be able to separate cardboard fibers, containers, and aluminum and metals, metal cans, like pop cans and veggie cans. We have separate streams that we're able to divert all of those things to to maximize or to minimize the cost that we incur in order to be able to dispose of all of those things outside of our waste site at a proper receiving facility. We don't know how many people are going to register for this program. We might have one, we might have 100. We have no idea. We don't know how much volume people are going to bring. We really don't have a benchmark, because we have never separated our non-eligible from our eligible recycling. We've always just done a mathematical formula to do that reporting with the province. So we don't have any benchmarks to work from. So it's really hard to predict what the costs and the revenues are. We are confident that the registration cost plus the the cost per use, the pay-per-use fees, will be sufficient to cover any expenses the town may incur to dispose of those recyclables at a recycling facility. And as such, we propose that this program would be in effect for a year, with us reviewing the financials on an ongoing basis, but bringing a report to council early in the new year about the first six months of the operations to tweak it if we need to, to discontinue it if it's not working at all, or to look at the costs associated with those who choose to use the program to make sure that they are reflective of the needs of the program.
So, excuse me, so will we promote it as a trial? Or how are we gonna promote it? There is a test program or a pilot program or?
I think we'd promote it as a pilot. I mean, we'd be offering a year of service that isn't available right now, with the intent of it being a permanent service, but you know, if there's no uptake, then maybe it doesn't make sense to continue. So, yeah, we're proposing to allow us to continue to do that for up to a year, but with a midpoint report to council about how it's going so far, so that you can make a early determination about, or any adjustments that may need to be made to the program at that point. So for clarity, none of this recycling would end up in the landfill site. This would all go to a recycling facility. So we would truck the tin cans and the metal to a metal receiver. We would truck the cardboard to a recycling facility. We would truck the containers to a recycling facility that would accept those. There are several different facilities that we could potentially be using at various locations in our, close to our area and further away from our areas. We may have to go as far as Nappany, but we may only have to do that once every three months, depending on the volume of things that we get for some of these items. So we really just want to give it an opportunity to see how it works and how it goes and what the uptake is, and then tweak it as we need to from there. So.
Questions from Counselor Miles.
So in my head, I sort of think the the run of the pilot is fairly inexpensive. It really we have the trucks already, we have the compactors already, we have the balers already, we have those, the extra trash bins that do all this stuff that is just sitting there anyways. We have the trucks that we already use to take a recycle, so we can deliver that as it is. And so if there's no uptake with this program, it's kind of no harm, no foul. We haven't, we're not spending any money to find a piece of equipment to make this happen. We're just seeing that there's likely a need within our community from an ICI perspective that says, okay, we're trying to find something. It really is almost going to be cost neutral, is what I'm assuming. It's not a revenue generator. It's really, if it's gonna cost us most likely this much to move it all, once we're ready to move it. And do we get paid at the end run? Does a recycle have any value anymore? Does the province even, or, you know, we sell our recycles. Are we still able to do that with what we're taking from an ICI perspective?
So the intent of the financial framework that we've put in place is that it would be at least revenue neutral. There may be the potential for a small amount of revenue generation. Again, depending on uptake, market prices fluctuate incredibly in this market. Cardboard is the most lucrative, but even hauling cardboard away will still cost us money at the peak of the market. There is pretty much no market for containers, your plastic bottles and those. There is pretty much no market for containers, your plastic bottles and those things. So those are extremely expensive to get rid of. But we know that our commercial folks don't generate a lot of plastic waste. Most of their waste is cardboard and tin cans. There is a market for tin cans. Metal is metal. There's always a market to sell metal. Can we sell it at a revenue neutral cost? Don't know because it fluctuates as well. But there is revenue, the recycling will generate some revenue. We don't believe it will be enough to cover the costs of offering the program, which is why there will be the disposal fees on top to offset that variance.
Any other councillor East? Okay. Jerick Mike?
Thank you. So this is for ICNI customers. So at least we're presenting something to them that they can use if they wish to, or they can go on their own and do it some other way. And they delivered to the landfill and they pay for that. Good, thank you.
Councillor Eastman, did you have?
I guess, I guess just to further what councillor Miles was saying, I guess, getting there in my mind. So for example, if a resident has, gets a big piece of equipment delivered, like a plant or something, there's a whole bunch of cardboard, and they don't want to wait till the next time that the E360 pick it up. Are they allowed to take that to the?
Absolutely not. We do not accept a stitch of residential recycling as of July 1st. It all has to go in the blue bin containers through E360.
Okay, so the ICNI contributors, they put it in in our dumps, in our containers, and then we will pay the cost of shipping that east or south?
Yes, that's what the user fees will cover is the cost that it will cost the town to dispose of those non-eligible source-generated recyclable materials.
And do we have ways and means of doing that now?
Yeah, we have the bin truck that hauls those bins. We do that now with our recycling. We have the compactors already installed in site. Yeah, and we have staff that do that, who are licensed to drive those trucks, all of those things. So we have the resources. We have the capital pieces of things, like the physical tangible things that we would have paid capital money for to obtain at some point or another in order to be able to continue with that function. So there is no cost to us capital-wise to set up this program. It's strictly operational expenses because we don't know how much we're going to have or what we're going to pay in order to dispose of it.
So the town of Bancroft will have no recycling truck going around picking anything up, correct?
Yeah, we will not be picking up any recycling.
So there'll be a cost saving there for the, for the number one, the truck and servicing it as well as manpower, right?
For the one recycle truck, yeah.
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 Good.
Councillor McGibbin?
So businesses can just sign up whenever they want. If they have another plan to start with, they can go with that. If that doesn't work, then they can go to this route.
Yep, and on the registration form, we've put that any part month that they sign up for will be considered that month. So we're not going to prorate the $50 by 12 days in the month. If you sign up on the 12th of July, then you'll pay for the month of July and August and so on and so forth. Yeah.
Councillor Lawrence?
This is kind of an open-ended question, but do we have any idea of how much it would cost a business to arrange for this themselves rather than having the town do it?
So we did, in part of our solution finding, we did obtain some costs from some of the contractors. Some of them charge a flat rate plus tonnage. Some of them charge a per stop plus tonnage. Some of them charge hauling fees, so it's kind of all over the place. There are private contractors who choose to pick up some types of recyclables from some businesses, primarily cardboard, because if they can get enough of it, there is a market for that. E360 or some other similar company who's providing residential services may be willing to enter into contracts with businesses to pick up at their locations and do that. They will still charge those businesses the same cost that we're going to pay to get rid of those materials at a recycling depot, plus transportation and handling and all of that stuff. So our costs are competitive with what the people who are running the residential programs would charge.
So just one question, so signage. So I know we have signage going up to let the general public know that there is no recycling at the waste site as of July 1st, correct? Do we also have, do we have, are we going to put up signage or is it on the signage notifying them of the bag tag fees? I would suggest it probably be a good idea. It might save a lot of issue with them dealing with the attendant, arguing with the attendant. It's up on the side, you know? And the last thing, I'm into signs. Signage for this ICNI program is that if a business shows up, that they know that these are, here it is. Here's the program. Here are the rules. So they don't think they can just show up. So I think it would be helpful and probably would help staff. They wouldn't have to be explaining it all the time, just point to the sign, so. Yes, councillor Miles?
And I'm assuming a handout of some type at the same time, signage there, but also something to hand to somebody that gives some guidance to that.
Yeah, we do have a registration form of sorts, which also kind of outlines some of these requirements, what the drop-off dates would be and what the costs are. The other thing is that we are not going to be chasing businesses for this. We're not going to be doing accounts payable and accounts receivable. It will be when you come, bring your credit card with you. There's a debit credit machine there, and you need to pay for service at the time it's rendered, just as it is right now. If they bring a large amount of waste to the site, you pay for it when you get there.
One more question. Can they sign up? Can they register right at the landfill, like the initial registration for it?
Yep, there isn't any reason they shouldn't be able to do that at the site because we can take their payment there for the registration as well through debit or credit at that time.
So just a slight diversion. So E360 handling the whoever they're contracting to handle, the consumer pickup. I thought they were going to be publicizing and providing information to the residents of the town. I haven't seen anything have yet. Are you aware of anything that might be coming?
I did receive an email from them approximately a week ago about a mail-out, and they are trying to figure out how to do a mail-out in the current environment and with our geographic challenges. In particular, they usually do their mail-outs by postal code, which is typically a neighborhood in an urban center. Unfortunately, our postal code covers five different municipalities. So doing a mail-out to our postal code gives four municipalities the wrong information. So they're trying to determine a different way to get information out to businesses and residents.
If I'm correct, this is June 1st almost, and they've got four weeks to to do this, okay? Do we have anything? Are we going to post anything? I see you there, Wayne. I'll give you a sec there.
Okay.
Do we, are we going to post on our own website, like contact information for them so they're not bugging town staff?
Yes, they're supposed to be providing us with approved boilerplate template-type things that we will post to our website and social media as we get closer to implementation.
Okay. Councillor Wiggins, welcome. I see you there now. Do you have a question?
Well, no, I want to support you on your idea for those signs. I think they got to be big enough too that they can read.
Right.
And maybe even put one out partway up the road. The other thing I think is what about a handout and going along Main Street, just on Main Street where the main businesses are, and dropping it into each business. It'll only take an hour or so to do it. And just trying to be proactive rather than reactive. Went to the business and says, this is what the rules are. This is what's happening. The other thing is them and us should be on the radio in this week and in the times for advertisements. A little bit ahead, like I'd say now, ahead of 1st of July, so that everybody doesn't blow up. I can see the 1st of July. Andre, you might want to take a holiday.
She is. She's gone for the next two weeks, so. First of all, councillor Wiggins, I've got to congratulate you. You've got online without any incidents. Maybe you should do all the meetings remotely, you know?
Well, I'm here now. When I get home, I'm not sure how good I'll be getting back on, but I'm on now.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks to the guy in the desk. He did it for me.
Yeah, those are all good suggestions. I think you're correct. Promotion, you know, no matter, we've talked about this, we've publicized this. But as we all know, getting information out is so difficult these days. So councillor Eastman, you had your hand up?
Yes, I just want to remind council that if there's going to be any mailings, we are subject to a potential postal strike. So, I mean, we only have four to five weeks to get all this information out before we start this. So it's going to be, you know, we don't want to have E360 or even ourselves mailing stuff out and then bang, it's stuck in the post office. But and what councillor Wiggins said is head on, like if we have to deliver it, if we have to do it, if the council has to do it, I mean, fine, I mean, it's only going to take a while. Good promotion if we did it.
Well, with all due respect, with the residential portion, that's not our problem.
Well.
It will be.
It is our problem if our customer, if our residents are going to complain, they're going to complain to us, not E360.
We're to provide them as of July 1st with the phone number and not engage in any conversation. So we'll be handing out the phone number as often as we need to.
I think we've been talking about this. You said a year. I think it's been two, a couple of years now that we've sort of put the flag up. Councillor Miles?
Yeah, I think to be accused of not sharing this in our community or have not told people or have not mentioned this or not brought it up at meetings or have not put it in my taxes or have not heard it on the radio or have not seen it on Facebook or have not seen it in the paper is not the truth. This has been widely shared in a variety of formats for a very long time. So, but I get it. People don't see everything. But I think, you know, we certainly are in a position to say we've, I think, staff, and I've never not hesitated at things, so to mention this. So I think we've really done our best to, and the other side, you're right. It's what we can't communicate on their behalf. It's not our problem.
Yes, councillor Mullet?
One of the other things that is a concern is that Bancroft didn't opt into it. We've opted out. So some of our neighbors have opted in. And so they're talking to people here, and so there's two different aspects, so that can be an issue.
Right, because those municipalities did not have curbside pickup, of course. And yeah, they did not have curbside pickup. And just to be clear, we could have had a depot operation going for six months, but then we would have been trying to implement a program come January 1st in the middle of winter, which is not a really good time to do it, so. And we would have had to have let them use our equipment, and we would have been responsible for any damages, repairs, et cetera. So the offer to run a depot for six months was really, it was not feasible and would not give us proper time to get this potential, this ICNI program going. So that's the reason we've made that decision on that, so. Okay, thank you everyone. So we, the first resolution that we've already moved in second is to receive the report. All in favor, please? Thank you. And next resolution, be it resolved that the committee of the whole recommends to the council, corporation of town of Bancroft, adopt the proposed non-eligible source recycling program and associated fees as proposed. And further, that the committee of the whole recommends to the council, the corporation of town of Bancroft, that the tipping fee schedule for the Dungannon landfill site be amended to add the fees for non-eligible source participant recyclables as described herein, and direct staff to make the, to make the implement that, to implement the approved changes effective July 1st, 2025. Could I have a mover and a second on that, councillor Mullet and councillor Miles? All in favor, please? Thank you. Item B, recruitment policy. The resolution before us is be it resolved that the committee of the whole does hereby recommend that the council, the corporation, the town of Bancroft, does hereby adopt the recruitment policy as amended. Could I have a mover and a second on that, please? Councillor Eastman, and I'm sorry if there was a second or I missed a hand there. Could I have a second or please, councillor Miles? And this goes over to our clerk. It's buried behind all those laptops.
What do you see, Alison?
Okay, so this is the report regarding the draft recruitment policy. So just a little background. So at the February 25th, 2025 Committee of the Whole meeting, our staff were directed.
Just like, yeah, no closer, yeah.
Staff were directed to update the town of Bancroft recruitment policy to ensure that the policy was reflective of current practices and updated legislation. So the following updates have been made to the recruitment policy. So the human rights, the Ontario Human Rights Code grounds of discrimination provisions, they were updated. We also, the updated the policy, the updated policy was simplified, but still ensuring that sufficient detail was provided to allow appropriate staff, direction to staff members. The updated policy also reflects the town's current practices. So we removed the employment offer letter as we use our HR consulting services to do that. We also removed Form RS number one as we no longer use that form. We require applicants to provide a cover letter and a resume. We also updated the hiring relatives section. That was revised as per council direction at that meeting. The policy was also updated to include strong mayor powers requirements, and those are reflected in section 6.2.1, 6.6.5, and 6.6.6.
So the hiring of relatives, we agreed that we would accept that. I can't remember, is, we also talked about the chain of command, like not reporting directly to, is that, that's in here?
That is.
Okay.
It is, yes. A relative of a staff person may be hired by the town so long as they are not the direct and immediate report of that relative.
Perfect. Yes, councillor Mullet?
Reading over that policy and with the strong mayor powers, does that, with the new strong mayor's powers, does that put the HR committee not required?
I would say no. I would say no. I would say it would still be enforced.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? All in favor, please? So pass, thank you. Oh, sorry. Sorry. Speak up there.
Sorry, buddy. I just, while I just turned my mic on, just a question. Andre mentioned that staff members could apply for jobs. I believe that should also extend to council members. Is that correct, Andre?
Relatives of staff and council, yes.
And.
Can apply for jobs, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Oh, we're at the end. Did I miss something? It seems to have gone too quickly.
That's a great meeting, Paul. It's nice and short.
Yeah, okay, so the next meeting date, regular council schedule for, it says here, June 24th is, oh, Cal. It says council. That should be regular meeting of Cal. Just a reminder, council is next week.
June 3rd, I think.
Yeah, which surprised me a bit, anyway. And a motion to adjourn? Oh, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, please, go ahead.
At our meeting of the Bancroft OPP detachment board, just on this past Monday, there's going to be change of detachment commander for a while. The new detachment commander is Staff Sergeant Ryan Martin. And he started his career in Burlington detachment 25 years ago and has worked in a variety of detachments in West Region and Highway Safety Division. And he is currently the manager of operational health and wellness support programming and the health of workplace team. He has had the opportunity to lead teams in a variety of roles, including frontline policing, VIP motors escorts, professional standards, collision construction, officer of the commissioner, and within the OPP's leadership role. Many of you will recognize Ryan from his travels facilitating delivery of the OPP's central leadership workshops. He is a value-based, people-centered leader who looks to learn from others, and he's coming, he's here now. He's replacing Staff Sergeant Jeff McKenna, who is being seconded, I guess you would call it, to Picton detachment for a minimum of six months.
When is Jeff departing or is he gone already?
Well, the new gentleman is here, so I assume he's, I assume he's leaving by the first of June.
Okay, thank you.
Just wanted to bring everyone up to date on that.
Well, we wish Jeff the best. He's been a very good ally of the town, et cetera, and we've worked well with him. And whether we see him back or. And, uh, whether we see him back or not, who knows, but, uh, we, we wish him the best. So, did councillor Wiggins, were you wanting to say something?
I missed, I missed where Jeff was going. Yeah, I agree with your comments, Paul. A great guy to work with, uh, and his heart was in the town for sure. But where's he going, Charlie?
Picton.
Where, sorry?
Picton.
Oh, Picton. Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, anybody else have anything? Okay, cover a motion to adjourn, please.
That'll be me.
Okay, councillor Wiggins, councillor Eastman, all in favor. So, thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone. It was a pleasure.
Yeah. I'm still amazed. You got on. Very good.
Yeah, Charlie, anytime you need help, just call.
Okay, thanks.